Good evening. Welcome to the May 4, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing personnel matters. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any participation in government students here this evening? Okay. Your requirement will be to stay till 9:00. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, we'll take a break. We'll have you come up and sign out. There's sign-out sheets. And if you have any forms that you need signed by any of the board members, we'll do that for you. If the meeting gets over before 9:00, just come up at that time. All right. Introductions.
Diane Saber.
Joanne Cunningham.
Christine Beck.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Fino.
Next is the approval of the minutes of the April 19, 2016 regular board meeting. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Student Senate report. Do we have a representative? Great.
Hi, my name is Ellie Bell. I'm here in behalf of Senate. Over the past few weeks, we finalized dates for spring dodgeball. We're going to be holding that the week of May 23 through the 27th minus the Wednesday because we have the Red Cross blood drives, so the gym will be occupied. And then we have Mr. Bethlehem on that Friday, May 27th. And we are also finalizing speakers and other logistics for our suburban council leadership conference next November. That's about it.
Great. Anyone have any questions? Yes.
I saw a poster for a movie night in the halls. Is that being sponsored by the Student Government Association?
No, that's Student Council.
Oh, okay. Do you know what the movie is?
I think they're picking between like The Goonies and some animated movie. I don't know yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Ellie. Next is the interim superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. So over the spring vacation, we had trips that went to Spain and Germany. And by all accounts, the trips were tremendous success. Everyone had a wonderful experience. Our Spain trip was delayed by a day, but everything went smoothly. And the tour company put them up in hotels for the nights, and they got home safe and sound. So I heard great things. There's some pictures on the wall in the wings of the kids and staff. So also, at the May 18, the next board meeting, Mr. Knowlty is going to present an overview of our next potential capital improvement project. And basically, he's seeking the board's input on timeframe for discussions and presentations to the board as well as the public. In addition, he'll also be highlighting some of the major components that we would want to consider in the next project. So in...
Could he lay out like a calendar to some extent?
He's gonna propose some options and give us an idea of what that would take in terms of turnaround time with State Ed.
The Facilities Committee saw the potential calendar and asked that he come to the meeting, propose that calendar, and hear any questions or concerns of the board, and be flexible enough to perhaps adjust that calendar based on the board's feedback.
Right. And can we have some of that before the meeting?
Yeah, be in the materials beforehand.
Yes. Yep. And then also, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Hurst. We had had a presentation back in...
January.
December, January?
January.
About final exams and how they counted, basically in response to some of the new Common Core exams. So I asked Dave to give just an update to the board about some of those conversations he's had with supervisors and principals as well as other schools in the suburban council. So let's Dave to jump in here.
Okay, thank you. So typically, you know, we take a look at Regents exams from year to year to see how they perform so that, you know, we mitigate the impact that it has on our students' grades because we do use them as final exam grades. In the past, we've had sort of standout exams. In 2002, we had the physics exam where universally students performed poorly. It was a one-year blip. 2003, the same thing sort of happened with Math A. Again, it was a one-year blip. So adjustments, for the most part, weren't made for any of the districts within the suburban council. But now we're coming to these Common Core exams, and the trend does to be pointing towards the algebra exam in particular is performing, on average, about 11 points less for our students. Given that last year was the first year that the exam was really operational, again, that was sort of a one-year look, so we didn't make, take any drastic measure on that. But this year, we are going to take careful look again, and if we see that this trend is continuing, you know, we're prepared to recommend that we decrease the amount that the midterm and the final exam count for our students. We'd be in line. Shenandoah and Gilderlin are doing similar things. And we'd be looking at a 10% for the midterm and a 10% for the Regents exam for, just for this year, we'd just be for that algebra course. And then moving forward, we would continue to investigate what it looks like for geometry, Algebra II, and also the English exam will be operational for the first time this year. And then we also, down the road, are gonna be looking at Common Core exams in the sciences and social studies. So we'll have to keep a close eye on that. But for, right now, the original plan is just to take a look at the algebra exam again this year, given that all of the other exams tend to help our students in their final average. So we don't want to make decisions based on one exam across the board. I think we look at it more at exam-by-exam nature, and that's what so far Shenandoah and Gilderlin are doing the same. They're just looking at their math exams to do 10% for 10% for next year.
I want to ask a couple of questions on that. So based on the presentation that you gave back in January, which I don't seem to have the numbers here, there were only two schools that did a midterm and a final worth 17%. Bethlehem being one of them. I don't remember what the other one was, but there were only two. Knowing that there was 11% drop, because I'm concerned that nothing's being done this year.
Well, like I said, we're gonna take a look this year, and if we see that trend, we can always make the change this year. We don't have to hold off until next year. Also, looking at this, I did do a statistical analysis of this year's midterm, because I know there was some concern that the midterm questions are based on Common Core exams. But don't forget that our teachers put those questions together. It's not an operational exam, so our teachers make the scale for that exam. And the student averages on the midterm were not statistically different than any other course that took a midterm. Students, on average, scored two to three points lower on the midterm than their marking period averages to that point, which is the way all the other courses, in essence, perform for midterms.
Yeah, I guess...
So in other words, it didn't hurt the students. The midterm performed just like every other midterm in the school. The fact that it was based on Common Core questions, there was not a drastic drop on the midterm. Again, our teachers put those questions together and created the scale for that exam. So they did not have any more impact than any other course in high school or middle school.
And it's obviously not my position to judge it, but, you know, having an eighth grader taking algebra, I just didn't understand the rationale behind, and you don't have to answer this, between if there was an 11-point drop on the Common Core Regents exam, why you would base the midterm on the Common Core? That just didn't make sense because it was 34% of the grade.
At the end of the day, we have to prepare our students for that exam. So to give a midterm that didn't use those questions, we would not be setting our students up for the rigor of that exam. And again, our students actually performed well on that in the midterm. Two to three points, on average, lower than their marking period averages, which is, in essence, what all of the midterms perform like.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dave, if you were to do an adjustment based on seeing the average drop, though, would you do something such that if a student had done well and was, you know, was initially told it was gonna be 17 and 1/2%, and now be something less, would you take that into account, and they would get the benefit of the higher average that would help them?
Kind of like the Regents and the Common Core when they got the opportunity to do both. It's pretty similar.
That's something we'll have to take a look at. That's...
Right. Someone shouldn't be penalized because they're changing...
Right. I agree with that 100%.
You know, their expectation was, when they received the syllabus, that it was gonna be X, Y, and Z. Now, they shouldn't be penalized because we've, well, we're gonna rethink it.
Agreed.
It should be that they get the benefit of the higher one, I guess, is what I would propose.
And the state, just so everyone is aware, the state has said that they are adjusting that algebra exam because I think they've received so much feedback about the concerns with the scoring on that. So we're somewhat anticipating that the scores will be better this year. But as Dave said, if they're not, and we see that same trend, we certainly have the ability to address that so our students are not hurt by that.
Because I know they're rewriting a lot of the questions. So I know the teachers picked the questions for the midterm, but they could be questions that the state deems that they didn't think was appropriate to write in the first place. And it's just, it's a lot of percentage, and also with the homework being adjusted this year to 5%, I think those kids are at a significant deficit compared to other districts who don't have midterms and don't have the same rigorous homework policy that was changed this year and an 11% drop. So just my thoughts. So thank you.
I'll just weigh in and say I'm comfortable with what you're doing right now. I don't, I would caution folks to muddy the water so much as, okay, if you did well, then it's gonna be 17%. Because that's just, I know it's a good question to ask, but I don't, I personally don't think it's our position to, we should raise concerns, ask how you're addressing it, you know, raise additional concerns if we feel that that's warranted. It sounds like you're working with other districts. It sounds like for the midterm, it was consistent with other exams grades. And so I would say, let's go with the finals and then let these, let the districts work together and come back with some additional information. Only because I don't want it to say, okay, if you benefited that, then your exam's gonna be counted 17 or 13 or 15%. And if you did poorly, it's gonna count 5% for you. I think it's, I don't even know how that would work, but...
Well, I'm gonna disagree with you on that. First of all, I think that we all can comment on if we think something's detrimental to a student population. That's part of the board's job to do that. Yes, it's in their discretion, but we can also raise the issue. But I'm with Matt on that, that if it was posted as 17% of the grade and somebody got a 95, then they're entitled to 17% at a 95 because that's what we posted. But if we realize it's a deficit, it is in his judgment or the district's judgment to determine that maybe we should help those that were affected by it. Those that got the 95 shouldn't be penalized because we're gonna change it because it wasn't right to begin with. That's just my thought on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave, for that update.
That's everything on my superintendent's report.
Great. Board of Education report? I'm sorry. I know that there is a, the CASPA annual meeting, I mentioned it last time, is Thursday, May 19. Anyone who could join us, we'd like to have a good turnout. It's gonna be at Gilderlin High School. The president of Hudson Valley is speaking. They'll be speaking. It's our annual meeting where we present a service award to each member district. You can nominate one student. And then there's the MacGyver, is that right? MacGyver Award for someone pursuing an education degree. So, well, I know one Bethlehem student will be recognized that night. I'm not sure if they're gonna be able to go. I think that's also our senior banquet that night or something. Unfortunately, it's hard to coordinate everything. But my understanding is also that every award recipient will be receiving a voucher for free courts at Hudson Valley.
Okay. Cool. That's a good deal. Yeah, the senior banquet that night.
Yeah. I've seen that note, or signed. That's what I have to report.
Well, Mike and I were at the character breakfast at the middle school.
I forgot all about it. I got to work, and I said, oh, I'm not supposed to be at work yet. I'm supposed to be at the character breakfast.
It was the week before last, yeah. Last week was vacation, yeah. So, which, again, it was the last one of the year, and again, honoring the students that do something that, you know, something good that other people may not notice. But obviously, somebody did. And I just think that that's such a great thing that the middle school does, you know, to recognize students.
Yes?
Not directly related to the district, but I went back to my alma mater, the School of Education at UMass Amherst, for a faculty event where they were acknowledging some faculty who had been teaching there for 40, 30, 40 years. And there was a panel on social justice in education, and some people were talking about the school event at UMass being able to do so much because of the presence of a strong leader. And one of the panelists said, it's great to have a strong leader, but we shouldn't wait for leaders all the time, that if we always wait for someone to lead, we may miss opportunities. And as the people who put forth social justice or change, as people who wouldn't necessarily consider themselves leaders, may in fact become leaders. So the message is, don't always wait for the leader if, in fact, you can lead yourself. And then I also was introduced to a new vocabulary word, a set of words, that I'm going to use now in my own writing. So many times you talk about people who aren't white as people of color or minorities, and a faculty member used the term "people or person of the global majority." And I am adopting that. And I just, I was writing something today for a book, and I said, I'm actually gonna put that in there. So...
Thanks.
New ways of thinking things. It's long, but it's accurate.
Your editor might change it now. Anyone else? Any? Okay. Next is our presentation. It's our 2016-17 budget overview.
And as part of this, after the presentation, we actually will have what we call our annual public hearing on it. So it'll be a formality going through that.
Good evening, everybody. At the last meeting, the board adopted the budget, and tonight, we want to do just a quick overview of what was included in the budget that was adopted, and remind you what will be appearing on the ballot at our May 17 vote, and then open it up for our required public hearing on the budget. Our revenues were very, I guess the big news is that we had a big increase in our state aid with the 1.366 restoration in our GEA, coupled with the increase in the building aid that we were anticipating to have almost a $2.3 million increase in that state aid number was a wonderfully positive event for our budget development. That, coupled with stability in our other revenue items, gave us the ability to propose a levy that is below the calculated maximum allowable tax levy per the tax cap regulations at .81%. No use of fund balance yet again, so we have the revenues and resources to meet the proposed expenditures. There were a number of program additions that we were able to make based on the need that was voiced by the various areas throughout the budget development process. All in, it still resulted in only a 2.53% overall increase in our expenditures. We were fortunate, certainly, that we had some relief in our fringe benefits this past year with the reduction in our mandatory contributions to the two pension systems. And with stability in our other cost areas, we were able to restore a number of well-needed programs and still keep the budget in line. Although the tax levy or the revenue that will come to the district next year, if the budget is approved, will increase by .81% based on the tentative assessment values that we've received from Bethlehem and New Scotland, we're looking at a .09% increase in the tax rate. So for a $250,000 home, that would be an increase over last year's tax bill for school taxes only of $4.85. I'll be back here in August, once we have the final numbers from the town. I did get some updated figures from them just late yesterday, and the values were up even a little bit higher than what we had used to calculate this. So that .09%, barring any major adjustments with the whole grievance procedures that go through at the town level, may even be closer to zero. So a very rare and positive year as it relates to the tax rates as well. Live on the district's webpage is the Tax Estimate Calculator, where residents can go in and put in the value of their home, net of exemptions if they would like. And that will calculate, based on these preliminary rates, what they can expect to see as a change. So that's a fun little tool that a lot of people have been taking advantage. So it is live as of tonight, and people can go in there. As we get updated rates later in the season, I can go in and update that as well, so it's more current. Just a reminder that because we did adopt a tax levy that is within the calculated tax levy limits, our residents, if they are eligible for the STAR exemption, if they meet the income restrictions of the program, where they're earning less than $200,000, they will be able to receive the rebate under this program of $185. And those checks will be coming directly from the state of New York, and that would be around mid-October at the latest per that legislation. Our fund balance continues to be in compliance with the various limitations that we are subject to. Our undesignated unrestricted portion of the total fund balance will be just below the 4% maximum that is required when we know what the ultimate surplus is in the general fund for the June 30 year-end. We were projecting about a $2.5 million surplus, and our recommendation would be to put that money into the capital reserve. We had established that with voter authorization last election in May, anticipating that we would be getting this, be beginning the conversation on forming the next capital project. And we had talked about doing a series of smaller projects so that they didn't grow to be very large and potentially unwieldy. So as Mr. Downey noted, we'll be kicking that process off at the next meeting. We regularly look forward into the next few years, just to see if there are any potential warning signs that we should be heeding going forward. Based on the projections that we've just updated, based on these updated budget amounts, we appear to be very stable going forward, and there are no serious concerns on the horizon. So we'll continue to update that, but we're in a very good place right now financially. And it's not advancing. Let's try a click. There we go. We also, in our budget, have included the capital outlay, Phase 4, for work at the high school. So once, if the budget is approved, that will be part of our budget process. It's sort of an expedited way to get building aid on this smaller capital project. Also on the ballot, of course, we're going to have the budget vote. We will have the authorization, or request for authorization, to purchase 15 new buses as part of our ongoing fleet maintenance. That would be at a cost not to exceed $1.4 million. And then also, we will have two seats on the Board of Education, and we have two candidates for those seats. We have Jonathan Fishbein and then Michael Cooper, who will be on the ballot on that Tuesday.
Yes, I have a question on the slide before you move to the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Just on the, on the projections, the multi-year projection slide, I think Slide 10. How do you project, how do you project the state aid over the course of those years to come up with a revenue projection?
I use a very conservative percentage increase, so I take what our current year's amount is, and I'm escalating that by 2%. A large portion of our state aids are also expense-based aids, so knowing that we tend to be trending just over 2% for the growth, knowing that those formulas don't tend to change dramatically, other than the GEA component, that's what I use for that projection.
Thank you.
I crystal ball it, for the most part, but it's based on assumptions and trend analysis of what has come to pass in prior years.
And Judy, what assumptions do you make related to like the retirement, the retirement balances? Because I know those have been trending pretty well in our favor, so what kind of crystal ball stuff are you doing there?
What I do on the fringe benefits, because there's so many different line items that are part of that expense total. Of course, you have your health insurance, which is the largest portion of it, and that has seen its share of volatility in the past, coupled with the pension costs. We have workers' comp costs that are included in there as well. For the fringe benefit projections, I always take them as a percentage of the total salary. So I know about what the salaries will be based on, you know, assuming stable workforce, knowing what the underlying contracts are in place. That's a reasonably accurate number for total salaries. I just apply a straight percentage of the fringe benefits to that. And remember, no matter what these expenses are, at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget. So that's really, we know we have the ability to adjust some of the other, so like equipment, we have some discretionary items in there. We're able to control some of our contractual expenditures, so no matter...
So you use the same percentage year after year?
I will adjust it from time to time, but for this three-year projection, yes, I'm using the same percentage.
Okay. So if there's a big spike, like a double increase, a double-digit or double the increase in, say, health insurance, then that kind of throws you off.
It does, but again, I'm always reviewing and adjusting. So I've had that fringe benefit percentage as high as 42% one year, which is a shockingly high number, but that's what it was, so...
And you look at the, like, on the retirement plans, you look to see what the forecast is as well.
Right. I mean, they're crystal balling it as well. So you got a lot of assumptions built on assumptions, but that's the only tool that we have for doing that, so...
Right. But things like health insurance and going to your point, workers' comp, I mean, sometimes you'll have a year where you have a 10% increase on top of that comes out of nowhere.
But we try to manage that. Again, we put in that health buyout benefit in lieu, so we've been trying to make it appealing for employees to decline our health insurance by paying a nominal amount. So we're always looking at ways to shave costs over certain things to better manage the program. So I've been doing these types of projections for as long as I've been with the district now, and it really has been fairly close, so...
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So if there are no other questions on that, it's time for the public hearing.
Just before we begin the hearing, though, too, can you, just for everybody in the TV audience and for anyone, I know we've had inquiries about how to obtain an absentee ballot.
Yes, the absentee ballots, we do have an application on the webpage that you can fill out, and then that would go to Brittany Barrett as district clerk. And then she, once she verifies that you qualify to obtain an absentee ballot, she will get that out to you. If it's going by mail, you have to, was it three days before or five days before? You have to allow time, five days before. You have to get the application in so that there's time to review it and then allow it to get to you in time. And then we just have to receive those absentee ballots by 5:00 PM on the day of the vote.
Okay.
I have a question about that. Some people have been emailing questions about absentee. Is someone responding to that, those emails?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I figured Brittany was on that.
It also, somebody mentioned in one of the emails that they couldn't find it on there. So is it in a place? Do you have to kind of hunt for it? Because obviously, this person looked for it and couldn't find it.
Right. If we could maybe put it front and center for the next couple of weeks would be good.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sal.
Saber.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. Yeah. I mean, anything on the budget should be on the front page for the next several weeks.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Well, then we will begin the... Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed budget as required by law. The notice of this hearing was published in the spotlight, and a copy of the proof of publication will be included with our official minutes. At this time, I invite any members of the public who wish to speak and offer up comments either for or against on the proposed budget to come forward. I ask you to please state your name for the record prior to offering your comments. The microphone is up here. Anyone care to make any comments? I ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
That's first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That is moved. The hearing is closed.
Thank you. So next up is, of course, just a reminder to come to the vote. It's here at the high school from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM. Polls are open all day long. Remember, we'll be using the new scanning machines, just like in the November elections. So there'll be a little bit of a change, but we look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.
There'll be ample parking in all directions here.
We always encourage people to come early because our busiest hours are really 4:30 to 8:30. So lunchtime voting or early morning voting, if you want to avoid lines, is a good way to do so.
And how many, how many scanning machines will we have?
We will have four scanning machines.
Okay.
And then a number of the privacy stands where you can mark your ballot, and then it's very quick, as you probably know, feeding it through the machine. So I'm hoping it keeps everybody flowing along quickly. I don't like to make people wait.
And I'm sure it's similar to the lever machines, but we'll be able to get the results within, you know, right after you open up the machine.
In fact, we have mandatory training for those machines. It'll be going Friday up to the board. We'll be going Friday up to the Board of Elections to learn all of the finer points of working with those machines, so...
And for the public, we, you know, as soon as the polls close and we do, they tally the votes, and we are able to announce the results of everything.
Right. And of course, we'll have the library and trustees as well, both the school and the library.
Yep.
Okay?
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is recognition of visitors. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through E.
So moved. Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? I would like to recognize, item number D is a $5,000 donation from GE Global Research. And Mark Edgar is here, if you'd like to come up, Mark? Say a word, a few words? He's on our STEM Committee for, for the district, and it will be used for 3D printers.
Great.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Oops, is this on?
Yep.
Makes it feel so formal. So, hello, everyone. I'm Mark Edgar from General Electrics Global Research and Development in Niskiun in New York. And we're proud to have been able to make a donation of $5,000 towards the 3D printer competition. So, we've actually had, part of that has actually been used already for building three 3D printers that will be used by the students to compete in the competition, as well as used in future years. And so it's, we had a group of about 18 students that were engaged for over a two-day period, and it was just a wonderful experience working with them. It was really, really engaged students that were just really interested in being there. The staff was wonderful. Thanks, Jody, for your support. And we even had students telling other teachers in the high school about it, and they stopped by to see what it was all about.
I would just like to thank Mark. He's been really a great advocate for this and a great resource for us, is, you know, what's really going on outside of our walls. And the kids have had a great time with it. The actual competition, the voting on that, will be, on the budget vote, will have the iPhone cases displayed and the jewelry the kids have created. So you'll be able to see a lot of what they've designed and done with the 3D printers. But Mark has been fabulous, and thank you so much for the donation.
Thank you. Happy to do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Also, one minute. I just want to, at the same time, I mentioned about Paul Wing making his fourth donation of $10,000, again, towards the whole STEM.
He's part of the STEM Committee as well.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
And has also been wonderful on the committee.
I just wanted to say that it would be a great thing if we could have a demonstration at some point of one of the 3D printers. If people haven't seen them and operate, they're amazing. My son's company in New York has one. And the different applications that they can be used for, I mean, they're being used sometimes now for figuring out how to do various bone operations and what can be positioned where. And it's just an amazing technology.
Yeah. Can I ask Mark a question?
Yes.
I was just curious how this all came about, the 18 students and the 3D printing? Could you tell me just a little bit about, I mean, condense it, or?
Sure. So, so I've been participating on the STEM Committee meeting for the past year or so. And so, you know, the excitement that was, that was being generated about the 3D printing competition, I went back to GE and said, "Hey, you know, it'd be great to do something around it." And they said, "What, what could we do that would really inspire students even beyond just using the 3D printers?" And I said, "Well, hey, why don't, why don't we actually get students building and understanding what's, how everything is working, right? Rather than keeping it as something that's just sort of, well, it just kind of happens, right?" And so, I actually designed, over a period of a couple of months, designed a printer, my background is in this area, and designed a printer that was suitable for students as well as could be used for lots of different things. So in fact, I think one of your physics teachers is interested in how it could be used as an experimental platform, sort of thing. So, so GE came, was able to find some money in their external relations, and so it was, so some of the money is going towards, is for not only the printers, but also for the award winners in the competition itself, so that they can actually have a professional print of their design done. So the jewelry, for example, can be done in metal, for example, so...
Thank you very much.
The kids were very gung-ho about it. And the teachers really are very excited about it.
It's very exciting.
Yeah. So we're happy to support something that we hope really inspires not only the students but the community as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. And again, I mean, we're very fortunate in this community. We have a very supportive community, both corporate and, you know, residents that are very supportive. Thank you for that.
Do you send out letters to these folks? Do we send out letters to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Do we, Jody, or I guess Dave, either one or both, do we showcase this kind of technology for kind of the non-science class kids? So in other words, if you have a kid that's not necessarily plugged into a higher level of science class, like a physics class, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking that this kind of technology should be so inspiring for kids kind of all across the, you know, the spectrum of educational levels and...
That was one of the reasons we actually got the art classes involved. Because you think about art, you don't necessarily think about technology, 3D printing. So, we have our jewelry-making classes doing it and using the 3D printers. So that was part of the reason. One, we talked about first, you know, iPhone case, and we talked about girl-boy, what would interest everyone?
Right.
And Melanie was really excited to try it out with the art classes, and so we're using them in the technology classes. So, it really isn't just, it's not just the high-level science classes. It's more of the, it spans the gamut of different options. We talked about even, how can we bring in the future middle school students to participate?
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
In the competition, was it the competition opened to everybody? Didn't we decide that, that, you know, anyone could?
Yes. Yeah, anyone could participate. They didn't have to be in a class. Anyone could participate.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, I haven't heard any of this from my kids. I mean, I have two kids who are in, you know, some, one of them's in one of the advanced art classes, so, you know, but also kind of heavy science, and never heard a darn thing about it. So, that's not good. I'll have to give them a hard time.
Yes.
Especially if they're in the competition and you didn't know about it.
Yeah, exactly. Right? Maybe they're designing something.
But it also goes to, I mean, you know, I joke about it, but it kind of goes to a broader issue of, there's lots of stuff that goes on in the school that we don't hear about as parents, that if we, and, you know, some of it, I think we do a really good job at pushing out information to parents about what's happening in the school. And, you know, I'm on the website all the time. But, but I think parents, to be that promoter on the parent's side, the more information we get on cool stuff, especially cool, interesting, unique things that, you know, prompt a conversation, I mean, the better off we're able to do our job. So, you know, more is always better on, I think, on the parent's side.
Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through E.
So moved. Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I will just say, I really like this idea of the program assistance, because I know that some of these folks who have been alums of Bethlehem and fairly young, so they can really work with young athletes in a way that I think some of our, you know, older coaches, it's just, it's just a nice addition, let's put it that way. And I happen to know Mr. Graves, he's one of my neighbors, and just a, you know, great personality to work with. So it gives people a chance to try out coaching, but also, you know, a young alum working with some of our athletes, I think it's a great program.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Item number 10, other action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items A through E.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Item number 10 carries. At this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. I would like to, and the last action item was, we had approved the teacher's contract, and I want to really thank the BCTA for working with the administration and the superintendent in coming up with their next contract. I believe it runs for the next three years.
Four years. Four years.
Four years, I'm sorry. Four years. A lot of districts have issues with their contracts, and we seem to have a very good working relationship with our professional staff and our support staff and every, all of our staff. But I want to thank the BCTA for coming to the table and coming to a very good, solid contract that's good both for them and it's very good and solid for the district and for our long-range planning. And they've always been there at the table helping us, so I want to thank them for that.
Do you know when that might be up? I mean, for people who are interested in seeing the contract, does that get posted on the website at all, or how do people? I mean, some people actually read, I mean, I know people in public that talk to me about teacher contracts or other contracts.
Yeah, well, the contract itself will eventually be posted, the MOA, is the items we're going to change. So that can be available, and then we'll be working on updating the contract. And once the final contract is done, we post that on our website as well, so...
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Right, we're going to do a release on that.
Great, great, thank you.
Right, highlighting it.
Future meetings? The next meeting that we have is Wednesday, May 18th. We have a Board of Education meeting that will be a 6:00 PM executive session, 7:00 PM public session. We also have the annual vote on Tuesday, May 17th. Again, that is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The polls are open. We encourage everybody to please come out and vote. And I do, do we have, we go back in the exact session? No, we're not. No need to go back in the exact session right now. That's right.
Well, doodle calendar.
I've got so many things on my mind, but yes.
I'll move to which urn.
Okay.
Save you some.
First and a second. Okay.